I'd like to, I'd like to call this meeting to order and actually the first, the very first house cleaning, if you will, is I'd like to ask that you keep this aisle here open as our ROTC, junior ROTC folks from Como are going to come through, as well as when they're done, when the colors are going to be retired, they're going to go out this door, so if you would allow them, allow them a pathway, I would, I would appreciate it very much. Let us all rise for the presentation of the colors, the pledge, and remain standing for a moment afterwards.
(inaudible)
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 I'd like to call on Superintendent Aguilar, do you have any opening remarks?
Yes, sir, thank you. The Lafayette Parish School System Superintendent's Golf Tournament took place Monday, April 11, at the Wetlands Golf Course. I would like to thank all of the sponsors and donor, donors who generated approximately forty thousand dollars' worth of scholarship money and contributed food beverages and gifts. Special thanks to Mr. Bobby Bado and the Lafayette Parish School staff who contributed their time to make the event a huge success. I would also like to recognize our immersion schools, as many of our students will be participating in events at festivals and international. The schools include Alice Boucher, Evangeline, Myrtle Place Plantation, Prairie Elementary, Paulborough Middle School, and Lafayette High Schools. Students at Myrtle Place will host students from the Académie de la Martinique of Sarault Martinique. This is a, this is part of a global exchange program between the schools. Myrtle Place students plan to visit Martinique in 2017. Also in conjunction with next week's Festival International is the Louisiana Consortium of Immersion Schools Conference, where many of our immersion teachers will be presenters. This two-day event will feature our very own board member, Mr. Justin Centani, as a panel participant on Friday morning. The conference is being hosted at the Cecil P. Card Center in Lafayette. For more information, you should contact Dr. Michelle Hodge-Broussard, Assistant Professor at the University of Louisiana. Congratulations to Como High School's VEX Robotics Team, as they received first place at state for the Sportsmanship Award and Robot Design held recently in New Orleans. Ten members of the VEX Robotics Team were selected to attend Nationals in Iowa and placed nine, ninth out of eighty-two teams in programming. They also have a robotics team called FRC, not sure how that's pronounced. They have forty-seven members of this FRC Robotics Team. They also participated in two regional competitions in Kenner and Houston and did very well for their first competitions ever. The Environmental Sciences Academy will host its annual Earth Day at Lafayette Middle School on Saturday, April 16, noon until 4:00 p.m. There will be activities involving preserving nature and environmental protection. The event will include games, a petting zoo, and arts and crafts. Admission is a donation of one plastic bag. Tonight, we will be recognizing our board members who have attained their training hours for 2015, our Principals of the Year, and Students of the Year recipients. We will also have an update from David Thibodeau STEM students regarding their space launch and recognition of the Paulborough Middle School Girls Basketball Team. Board members, several agenda items are being introduced tonight, addressing important decisions regarding program placement in upcoming school years. I want to remind you that demographer Mike Hefner and the board discussed at the March 9 meeting the following recommendations. One, declare or signal a clear intent to implement zone changes in the 2017-18 school year. Two, authorize staff to look at standardization of grade span configurations for, for our elementary and middle schools. I think we are already working on that assignment. And thirdly, authorize staff to look at recommending changes to program placement ahead of the work Mr. Hefner will complete regarding school zone changes. The agenda items being introduced tonight will ultimately begin the discussion about how best to utilize the existing capacity of our schools. And my last item to report is that at your station, you have an invitation to the groundbreaking ceremonies set for Southside High School. The event is planned for Friday, April 29, at 10:00 a.m. in the morning, and you are invited to participate in the groundbreaking ceremonies for Southside High School. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar. And Dr. Aguilar mentioned the, one of the accomplishments over at Como High School. I'd like to thank the OV Como High School Junior ROTC for the presentation of the colors. We appreciate that very much. Next portion of our agenda are recognitions and presentations, but before I go any further, I'd just like to recognize one of our fellow elected officials, Kenneth Boudreau from Lafayette Parish Council. Kenneth, welcome over here. Kenneth and I run into each other from time to time in a restaurant on the north side. Dr. Aguilar is going to recognize some of the school board members for training hours earned. Dr. Aguilar, I'm sorry, Joe, Mr. Craig?
Good evening, board members and audience. Tonight, I have the pleasure of assisting Dr. Aguilar in recognizing our board members for the training hours they have earned for the 2015 calendar year, as required by the State of Louisiana through the Louisiana School Boards Association. Board members, when I call your name, please come over to the center to receive your certificate and to take a picture with Dr. Aguilar. District One, Ms. Mary Morrison. District Two, Mr. Tommy Angell. I, I have to mention, he set an example of leadership. He earned forty-two point seven five credits, way above everybody else. District Three, Mr. Elroy Broussard. District Four, Dr. Timmy Shasson. District Five, Mr. Britt Lachelay. District Six, Mr. Justin Centani. District Seven, Ms. Dawn Morris. District Eight, Mr. Eric Kinesik. And District Nine, I'm sorry. District Nine, Mr. Jeremy Hidalgo. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I've also had the opportunity and the pleasure of recognizing the Principals of the Year for elementary, middle, and high school. Each of our applicants displays instructional leadership, skills that support a positive environment on student learning, including curriculum knowledge, standards-based instructional practice, the use of data to drive instruction, and support to invest and inspire colleagues, communities, families, and students. Principals, after I call your name, if you would come up for a picture with the superintendent and board president, Mr. Tommy Angell, and please remain on the side for one final group picture. Our first representative, Principal of the Year for High School, is Jeff Debataz. Jeff has been principal of David Thibodeau STEM Academy for five years. He's done an excellent job of building the academy's programs at his school. This year, he was awarded the 2016 Southeastern Region Administrator Art Education Award, and his student's project was selected as one of the fourteen projects by the NASA for a science experiment aboard the International Space Station. In his own words, "The staff and families at our school refer to me as a hands-on principal. I take pride in this title because I feel an effective administrator is one that is always involved in working with his or her staff and families to ensure that the academic and social needs of our students are met." Congratulations, Mr. Debataz. Principal of the Year for the middle schools is Ms. Candy Kelly. Mrs. Kelly is an Acadiana High School graduate and proud to serve the community of Scott as principal for the last three years, and assistant principal for the prior five years. During her tenure as principal, Scott Mittal implemented the leader in me and continues to grow in this capacity. She was named Region Four Leader of the Year by the Louisiana Association of Computer Using Educators. In her own words, "I am most proud of our dedicated staff that strives to put the needs of students above all else and their desire to grow professionally to set an example for lifelong learning." Candy Kelly, congratulations. And finally, Principal of the Year for the elementary level is Ms. Narita Felice Williams. Ms. Williams has been the principal at Evangeline Elementary for five years. She's also been selected to the next level, congratulations again, of state competition as being awarded as a state semifinalist. In her own words, "My goal as a skilled and dedicated instructional leader with both teaching and administrative experience is to foster, facilitate, and support the personal success and growth of students as learners, teachers as leaders, and parents as partners." She's been a recipient of a Leader Foundation Grant in 2015, and a Lafayette Educators of Foundation, I'm sorry, Lafayette Educators Foundation School Grant in 2014. Ms. Williams will continue her process to become a state finalist by competing the semifinalist essay questions and a Skype conversation interview. All semifinalists and finalists will be honored and celebrated at the Tenth Annual Cecil J. Picard Educator Excellence Symposium at the Crown Plaza Executive Center in Baton Rouge on Friday, July 15, 2016. Congratulations, Ms. Felice Williams, and good luck. Thank you.
Good evening, board and guests and audience. Now, it's time to present our Students of the Year at all three levels. We'll start with the elementary level. I'll call out the student's name. And we'll start off with, are y'all ready? Acadian Middle, Robert Robertson. LJ Alamar Middle, Ava Lampkin. Alice Boucher Elementary, Dacia Jones. Broussard Middle, Sarah Guidry. Charles Burke Elementary, Bryce Broussard. Karen Crow Heights Elementary, Logan Boozer. Deuceau Elementary, Kaylee Thibodeau. Evangeline, Evangeline Elementary, Iris Lorman. JW Falk Elementary, Curtis Bernard. Ernest Gillette Elementary, Jackson Woods. J. Wallace James Elementary, Alyssa Ewing. Ali O. Judice Elementary, Bryant Rivette. Live Oak Elementary, Hannah Sehadi. Egger Martin Middle, Louise Poncho. Milton Elementary, Ava Prejean. SJ Montgomery Elementary, Priyazna Shrestha. Myrtle Place Elementary is not present tonight, but I'd like to pronounce his name as Jason Arseno. Arsen Elementary, Ethan Guidry. Plantation Elementary, Raylan McAdams. Prairie Elementary, Bella Frederick. Ridge Elementary, Faisal Agandhi. Scott Middle, Gentry Duga. And last but not least, Youngsville Middle, Riley Foster. To continue our presentations, we will do the middle school eighth-grade Students of the Year at this time. We'll start off with Acadian Middle, Ali O. Weininger. LJ Alamar Middle, Carlin Sakani Matthews. Paulborough Middle, Jacob Tate. Broussard Middle Student of the Year is not present tonight, but I'd like to recognize him by saying his name, Aiden LeBlanc. Karen Crow Middle Student of the Year, Savion Siner. Judice Middle, Riley Foot. Lafayette Middle, Natalie Moss. Egger Martin Middle, Cecilia Adams. Milton Middle, Connor Venidas. Scott Middle, Harley Snelling. Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy, Sidney Legge. And last but not least, Youngsville Middle, Alyssa Gordon. And now, we move on to our high school, 12th-grade Students of the Year. We'll start with Acadiana High School, Jacarli Martinez. Karen Crow High School, Abigail Guidry. Como High School, Alice Puck, Elise, I'm sorry, Elise Puckett. Early College Academy, Mia Tolliver. Lafayette High, Caroline Munsel. Northside High School, Regino Boudreau. And Thibodeau STEM Magnet, Alicia, I mean, Aisha Otter. Aisha Otter. Once a student has been named the Student of the Year at their school, we have a competition that continues to recognize the Lafayette Parish Student of the Year in each level. So, we'll start off with our fifth grade. Iris Lynn Lorman is the Lafayette Parish School System's fifth-grade Student of the Year. Iris's career aspirations are becoming either a physicist or a biologist. She's in the French immersion program at Evangeline Elementary and has been an honor rose student throughout her academic career. Iris has won first place in our school and parish social studies fair and is president of Evangeline's 4-H Club. In addition, she's been in martial arts for six years and is now a second-degree black belt. Iris Lorman. Our next, next level, Alyssa Gordon is the Lafayette Parish School System's eighth-grade Student of the Year. Alyssa is a student at Youngsville Middle School and aspires to be a family dentist or pediatrician. She just really wants to have a career that's based on helping others. This school year, Alyssa is a peer tutor in math and captain of the Youngsville Middle School volleyball team. She's also in the gifted enrichment program and plays on the LA Bombers Select softball team, as well as the Youngsville Middle softball team. She's in the symphonic band and has been selected to be a member of the middle school concert honor band. She's active in her community and in her church. Some of Alyssa's many accomplishments at school have been Principal's List Award for two years, highest GPA in ELA in math for two years, highest GPA in French and Science, ILE perfect score 500 in math, most outstanding woodwind band student for two years, and she's also read over a million words. And in her own words, "I'm very happy at this point in my life. Even though so much has already happened, I can't wait for what the rest of my life holds." Alyssa Gordon. And last but not least, Caroline Munsel is a senior at Lafayette High School, and she's our Lafayette Parish School Board, High School Parish Student of the Year. She hopes to attend Baylor University next fall to continue her studies in American Sign Language as a minor while majoring in marketing. Caroline, I know. Caroline is a very busy young lady. She's the executive board president of the student council, president of the Key Club, where she created and maintained the club's first website, and has accumulated over fifty community service hours, president of the National English Honor Society, and organized the first recurring open-mic night, and edited the school's literary magazine, president of the Servant Leader Council, and was responsible for overseeing and managing council teams, treasurer of the District Council of Youth Ministries, and planned and staffed youth events and retreats. She's an elected representative on the State Council of Youth Ministries. She has been appointed gifted ambassador for Lafayette High's gifted program. She is also a member of the Board of Directors for the T. Skipper's Class President, wait, T. Skipper's Theater Company, and has participated in over ten productions. She was elected class president her freshman, sophomore, and junior years. She's also on the speech and debate team, where she's received first place in numerous categories, including declaration, duet acting, impromptu humorous interpreting, and served as a member of the superintendent's team board. Caroline is also a member of the National Honor Society and has already accumulated over twenty-five hours of tutoring. Caroline has served on the Principal's Student Advisory Board and has assisted in organizing pep rallies. Caroline is also on the Principal's List, has received Caroline is also on the principal's list, has received numerous superior rankings at piano technique tournament, and was selected as the hardest working civic student. Caroline has also participated in the Dale Carnegie Youth Course where she received training in leadership and social skills, has been a delegate at Girl State, was a finalist and alternate delegate to the United States Senate Youth Program, has been a volunteer counselor at Cajun Camp, a camp for disabled and deaf children. She has also served on the Asbury International Mission Team, working on a construction site in Panama, building wheelchair ramps in Quincy, Florida, and painting playground equipment in Mississippi, and has volunteered at St. Mark's Soup Kitchen and St. Joseph's Diner. In her words, "I'm excited to begin the next chapter of my life, knowing full well that in the words of Michelangelo, I am still learning." Caroline Munsell. I want to thank all of you. At this time, I guess if you're a guest of the Students of the Year and you don't plan on staying, maybe this is your time to leave. I'm not sure. Or y'all could stay.
Moving along. Moving along, I'd like to recognize Dr. Aguilar or his appointee to recognize the David Thibodeau STEM students. Dr. Aguilar. Are those from Paulborough ready as well? If, if so...
Mr. Angel, we're, we're ready. We were looking for Mr. DeBates to...
He was in the audience.
Make the introductions. I'm sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, I'm very proud to announce this group of students that, and teachers, that have worked extremely hard on a project. Last year, around this time, um, these guys took on a project and, um, sent in a proposal to actually send a science experiment onto the International Space Station. Uh, we were one of 14 schools in the world that was selected to do this project. They're going to explain it more in more detail to you. However, it's really, really interesting because everything they, they did, our engineering department designed a nano cube with all of the technology inside of this nano cube, and our biomedical students actually put a science experiment into this nano cube, which is all about the size of a stick of butter. So I do not want to take away their presentation, but they have done a tremendous job. Our experiment is now attached to the International Space Station. Uh, it has been up there about two weeks, right, guys? And, um, we'll stay up there for 30 days. We will receive data roughly every three days on the effects of this experiment in a microgravity situation. And I'd like to introduce, first off, the teachers that led this experiment with these students. Ms. Nicolette Darjean. Ms. Stephanie Vedrine. And we have one other teacher who was unable to come tonight, and that is Ms. Stacy Thibodeau. Ms. Darjean, would you like a more formal introduction of each of your students?
Uh, as Mr. DeBates said, um, our students in our engineering department and our biomedical sciences academies have come together in order to place an experiment that tests, um, the antibiotic, an antibiotic on a bacteria. And now it is currently being tested to see if that bacteria will survive in a microgravity environment. Uh, the students had to come together to work on all sides of the engineering design process, along with the biomedical science academy for the scientific research process and the testing, uh, of experiments. And it has been a great privilege to see, um, all of these different ideas come together, all of the students from different backgrounds with different ways of solving problems, which is the core of what our school is all about. It's teaching students to be self-confident, self-proficient, self-reliant learners. And I just want to present, uh, Mr. Paul Pryor, our team captain. Um, Mr. Austin Hall, which is our fluid systems engineer. We also have Mr. Gavin Randolph, who also worked on our electronics. And this is just our high school side of this project. We also had a middle school portion of this project with, um, Mr. Mason Romaine. Mason, come on. And also Mr. Alex Rivera. And our middle school students supported the high school students all along the way with their research and, um, providing all of the documentation that they needed to incorporate into this great and wonderful project. So let me go ahead and let them share their limelight. Thank you.
Hi. Okay, the one thing I'm not good at is getting a PowerPoint up. Okay, so Lafayette Parish is now in space.
Yeah.
It's pretty, uh, pretty good. Uh, our nanolab launched on March 22nd around midnight, actually 11:40, uh, on a Cygnus spacecraft aboard an Atlas V rocket. Uh, it took about 14 minutes to get into orbit and two days to get to the ISS. Uh, we have a little bit about our project. Uh, our first name was the Stick of Butter because it's literally the size of a stick of butter. No joke. Uh, then we gave it a little bit more customizing, called the Jebadiah. Uh, the main components, uh, it's actually a somewhat complex system. Uh, we have a stamp board, uh, it's like a little microcontroller, it's our flight computer. We have a camera to observe everything that goes on. We have our circuit board for all of our pumps, our LEDs, uh, et cetera, running everything. Uh, the goal was to test the effectiveness of an antibiotic, uh, which was Bactrim against a bacteria called E. coli. We genetically modified it so we can actually see it better while it's in orbit uh, by using UV lights and, uh, some, something called P-Glow protein. Uh, it's what makes jellyfish glow whenever you take a UV light to them. So we did something similar to that with E. coli. Uh, the nanolab runs off of one-tenth the power of your normal smartphone. Uh, that runs at about one amp normally. Uh, this ran at five volts at 100 milliamps, so that's one-tenth the power. So as of April 4th, uh, our nanolab has been sciencing its way, uh, in orbit around Earth right now. So today marks the ninth day of our mission. Uh, these guys, uh, Gavin and Austin and our middle school team, they deserve the best team to send something to space award that, that's been given by me, so. Everyone on here deserves space ice cream, remember that. Uh, the team has really come to learn to work together as one and actually do something that is literally out of the world. So, good puns, hey? They've, they've shown that they don't reach for the skies, they reach for the stars. So that's, uh, that's a pretty big accomplishment, especially for high school, so. Yeah. Uh, we have a big thanks to our sponsors who really helped us out a lot along the way with mentors, uh, funding, et cetera. Uh, little tips and tricks about space stuff. Uh, yeah, it's pretty fun. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to make just a couple of comments. I, I taught Paul's father at Karen Crow, with his now Karen Crow Middle School several years ago. I played music with his grandfather. He was an accomplished guitar player, Frank Pryor. And I also used to purchase goods from his great-grandfather, who had David Storey, Karen Crow. Way to go, Paul, and the rest of the people from STEM. We appreciate that. And at this time, we'd like to recognize the Paulborough Middle School Girls Basketball Parish Champions. Girls, Dr. Chasson.
All right. It is my esteemed honor and privilege to bring to everyone here my passion and my joy. I just love these girls so much and they know it too. Um, the Paulborough Lady Tigers. Um, I'd like to introduce them one by one, so when I call your name, come on up. Uh, we'd like to start with Ms. Olivia Scott. Ms. Autumn Chasson. Ms. Alexa Sam. Ms. Emily Romero. Ms. Tamara Johnson. Ms. Jansen Joseph. And Ms. Caitlin Melbrough. And these are our lovely 8th graders. We're sure going to miss y'all next year. Our 7th graders are Ms. Lily Espinoza. Ms. Zoe Wilts. And we've got one 7th grader who couldn't be here. She had church. Her name is Ms. Alicia Young. Last but not least, our 6th graders. They were the entire mystery as to why I continue to want 6th graders to play, knowing that I didn't know a single 6th grader on campus, but everyone said, boy, you must have like a Michael Jordan 6th grader. Uh, 6th graders, Ms. Samir Linden. Ms. Kaylee Fields. Ms. Janaya Brown. And Ms. Sierra Cormier. And last but not least, our coaching staff. Uh, along with myself, we have Coach Cody Viatour. And the one who puts up with us all, Ms. Gillian Defice. I wanted to recognize these girls because they did such an amazing job this year. Um, we had such an amazing season. I promised these girls before we started playing that we were going to beat everybody. I, I, I promised them. If they just listened, do what we tell them to do, they work hard. And, I mean, we had some amazing games. We had so much fun this season. These girls, I mean, when I say they overcame extreme adversity, we, we were used to winning every game by 30 and 40 points. And, uh, we probably played our toughest game of the season three days after one of our starters went down with a pretty severe injury. And when I say it threw things into a complete disruption, we, uh, we had to take one player and put her here, take another player, and everyone had to change positions and we had to make it work. And it's one thing to play the teams you're used to playing. This was a team we had never seen before. They offered something new we hadn't come across, and they were literally our toughest opponent. And when I say these girls came together without someone that they depended on to play in the game, these girls bonded together. In addition to honor band that same day, and what else did we have? We, it's like I got players coming in that, in the middle of the first quarter, at the, at the, at the beginning of the second quarter, like, hey, you're walking a little slow. Speed up. I need you to, come on, speed it up, come on. Um, but, um, I at least wanted to bring these girls up and tell you how much we are proud of you. We love you. If I could keep all of you together and just bring you all to the same high school, I swear I would. But we can't. I know some of you are going to Lafayette High, Karen Crow, Como, and various undecided schools. So with that being said, um, I wanted to, uh, give a few special thanks while I have them up here. Uh, special thanks to, uh, a very funny story, Mr. Justin Centany. As we're in the middle of, uh, tryouts, Justin calls me and says, hey, man, I got some stuff we got to talk about it. Yeah, well, well, I'm at basketball tryouts right now. Okay, well, I'll come meet you. So Justin comes over and there's four adults in there, me, Coach Viatour, Coach Defice, and Justin. And we're in there and we're talking school board. And, and I, and, and he slightly points out, he says, hey, isn't that, isn't that, uh, Rudy's daughter? E- Espinoza? I said, yeah, I think so. Let me look at the list. Yeah. I said, man, I, it seems like she can play, but I'm, I'm, it's like she's just a little uncoordinated on that particular side. And he says, well, you know, she's left-handed, right? I said, she's left-handed? I said, well, I kind of asked that question. I wanted to get everyone on their strong side. Some girls have trouble with right-hand layups, left-hand layups, depending on what your, what your strong hand is. And I said, yeah, but she's left-handed. I said, you sure? Yeah. I said, hey, sweetie, do me a favor, go on the other side and turn into Michael Jordan. And, and I said, "That's, that's too funny." I said, "Um, no one can ever say anything bad about him" because Justin ran against Lily's mother for school board and he's in there pointing not, "Hey, listen, get a second good look at that kid right there." So no one better say anything ba, better not say anything bad about that gentleman over there.
Dr. Chasson, I'll, I'll tell you, it's not so much that I knew she was left-handed, but I watched her shoot a couple of layups and I was really sure she wasn't right-handed.
And then, uh, last but not least, I'd like to send an extra special thank you to, uh, Dr. Aguilar and Mr. Craig for calling and checking on me and my daughter. Uh, Ms. Samick for making multiple calls to check on me and my daughter. Uh, I'd call Ms. Samick about a school board item and as, before I get to say, "Hey, well, look, that agenda item, I'm..." Timmy, "How's your daughter? How's your daughter?" Um, and then also to all the board members. All the board members checked on me and my daughter, uh, throughout the ordeal. And as well, an extra special to Mr. Eric Kinesik. Eric volunteered to come and swap out. Someone had to be with her 24 hours a day. And he offered to swap out with us, him and his wife as well, just flat out offered. Listen, I, I'm not that good a company, I can just, I can, you know, deliver food, bring food, pay for it, I'll drop it there, man, whatever you need. And he didn't have to do that, really, really didn't. Um, so with that being said, I just wanted to tell everyone, each one of these girls, Coach loves you and y'all know it. I tell y'all all the time, whether you're at home with us, whether you're spending the night, whether you're eating anything that you wanna eat, 'cause you know if you come to my house, it's whatever you wanna eat. Y'all want some crawfish tonight? Oh, I, I apologize, the, uh, the, the last person that you heard, where's that gentleman at? The team mascot? Come on up, sir, he was at every single game, on the bench for every single game. Uh, and quite often the halftime entertainment. Uh, Mr. uh, Timmy TJ Chasson. So ladies and gentlemen, congratulations. You know what, if you don't mind, can y'all, can y'all come up one time for me, please? Ms. Jansen, Ms. Emily, you guys really don't need a microphone for this, but... Oh goodness, you don't need a microphone. I'm gonna let these girls break us down as only they know how. And, um, wait, once Autumn, you might have to cover your ears, okay? You gonna be okay? All right.
You don't love your baby?
No. She got practice right now.
Thank you, Timmy, and thank you, girls, and congratulations again on, on being the Parish Champions. It's pretty, uh, I think it's pretty impressive when you have a, a, a group of, uh, students who, who have a project on, on the space capsule. And you have a group of students who, uh, just won the Parish Champions. And, uh, as a person being from, you know, north of, of I-10, some of us would say Northside, some of us might say Upper Lafayette, but congratulations to all of those students, we, we think you're doing a great job. Thank you very much, and again, congrats. Moving along on the corrections, our approvals of the board, uh, and committee meetings. Approval of the minutes of, uh, April 13th, 2016.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes of February 7th, 2016, March 1st, 2nd, 9th, 15th, 16th of 2016, and April 6th of 2016.
I'll second their motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that we approve of the minutes as, as mentioned by Mr. Centini, seconded by Mr. Lachale. Any questions or comments from any members of the audience, members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
8-4, none against.
Okay, motion carries, item 4 on our agenda, financial information reports, uh, 4.1 sales tax collection reports for January, uh, 16 through February of 16. Item 4.2, summary of grant funding and activity, March of 16. Item 4.3, budget to actual reports, March of 16. Item 4.4, ratification of purchases, March of 16.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4 in global.
I'll second their motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Centini and seconded by Mr. Lachale that we accept agenda items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4. Any questions or comments from members of the public, members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
8-4, none against.
Motion carries, moving along to item 5 on our agenda. Information reports, item 5.1, personnel changes for April 13th, concerning, up to April 13th of, uh, 16. Mr. Longe.
President Angell, Dr. Aguilar, board members, we do have an introduction that we'd like to make tonight on behalf of Dr. Aguilar. We'd like to introduce Stephanie Reiners as the new academic auditor that you recently approved. The Stephanie Reiners earned a, earned two bachelor's degrees from UL Lafayette and a master's degree in education, leadership, and policy studies from the University of Texas at Arlington. Ms. Reiners has served as a classroom elementary and middle school teacher in Acadia Parish for 14 years and also served as a teacher for four years with the Diocese of Lafayette Parish. Her most recent position was the instructional assistant at South Crowley Elementary School, where she guided curriculum aimed at closing the achievement gap and assisted South Crowley Elementary School in being designated as a Blue Ribbon School. Additionally, she has served on state committees providing professional development and has written targeted curriculum in the area of English Language Arts. Ms. Reiners was selected as having a model classroom for Acadia Parish. She was awarded Acadia Parish District Teacher of the Year. Congratulations on your appointment as academic auditor.
Good evening.
Wow, um, how exciting tonight's been. President Angell, board members, Dr. Aguilar, and members of the audience. I'm truly excited and thankful for the opportunity to work with the schools, the faculties, the staff, the community, but most importantly, the children of Lafayette Parish. And tonight is a perfect example of why I'm so excited. Excellence in everything from academics all the way through sports have been shown to us this evening. Each time I'm asked my view on education, I always reference the famous quote from Nelson Mandela. "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." We have made it our mission, our goal, our vision to arm children with necessary skills, strategies, tactics that will give them the chance to achieve success and to make a difference in our world. My dedication to children in spite of their circumstances outside of the school day and to closing achievement gaps is evident in my commitment to each school in which I have been connected. And I can assure each of you that I will give Lafayette Parish the same dedication and commitment. As educators, our individual, and individuals connected to education, we have chosen a great responsibility for providing all of today's children with opportunities for success today and tomorrow. We must teach children through modeling, demonstration, repetition, and patience that hard work and good character are cornerstones to success. As your new academic auditor, I look forward to working as part of a team with the schools of Lafayette Parish and seeing great success. Thank you.
Any questions on personnel changes? Thank you.
Thank you. The next items on, on our agenda are introduction items, uh, which will be discussed and voted upon at our next regularly scheduled meeting. But we will, I will read them out so that everyone, uh, would know what they are and, and give you, what, two or three weeks to research them and question whatever, whatever the case may be. Item 6.1 is adjustment to the 1617 district calendar. 6.2, approval to advertise and initiate the search for Southside High School principal. Item 6.3, approval of a new job description, drill instructor. Item 6.4, approval of updated job description, school librarian. 6.5, extended day learning. 6.6, elementary grade school alignment. 6.7, consolidation of existing three gifted enrichment sites, 2015-16 into two gifted enrichment sites for 1617. Item 6.8, to consider relocating one or more high school academy programs, beginning the process in the 2017-18 school year. Item 6.9, relocation of Health Careers Academy. Item 6.10, relocation of Applied and Visual Arts Academy. 6.11, relocation of the Biomedical Academy. 6.12, high school gifted program. 6.13, middle and high school social studies textbook adoption. Item 6.14, request for approval of grant submission. 6.15, STEM grant submission. 6.16, approval, to approve proposed recommendations, RFP 18-16, routing and planning, planning software for student transportation, field trip management, and fleet maintenance administration. Those are our introduction items, they'll be up for action at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Moving along, item 7. Do we have a, do we need to go into executive session? That's next on our agenda. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Morris and seconded by Mr. Haddalgo that the board will, uh, move into executive session and we shall do so in the, uh, in the room. Uh, all those, uh, all those in favor, just signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carry, thank you. All opposed, name, motion carried. Thank you. RFP 18-16, routing and planning software for student transportation, field trip management, and fleet maintenance administration. Those are our introduction items. They'll be up for action at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Moving along, item seven. Do we need to go into executive session? That's next on our agenda. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Morris and second by Mr. Haddalgo that the board will move into executive session and we shall do so in the room. All those in favor, just signify by saying aye. All opposed, name, motion carried. Thank you.
My move will return to regular session.
Okay. Motion and by Mr. Hidalgo, second by Mr. Lachey that we go back into regular session. Any questions or comments from anyone? If not, Madam Secretary will call for the vote. Motion carries. At this time I will recognize Mr. Kinesik.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize our attorneys to act in accordance with the recommendations made during executive session.
I'll second.
And second by Ms. Morrison. Any questions or comments from members of the audience or the board? If not, Madam Secretary will call for the vote. All right, motion carries. Do we have a, Danielle, do we have another one? I'm looking at seven point, I mean, seven point three. That's the same one?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the items on our agenda. This meeting is adjourned.